Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 11th Council Work Session for the Town of Bladensburg. Thank you for either joining us live or coming back to watch the rebroadcast or recording of tonight's meeting. At this time, we are now called to order. The next item on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda, so I'll call for a motion to approve. Moved by Councilmember Rout, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt, any comments, questions, or edits? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Item three on tonight's agenda is the approval of meeting minutes. We'll begin with the April 11th, 2022 work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh no.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rout, any corrections, edits, or suggestions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And the final set of minutes on the agenda are for June 6th, 2022 work session. Is there a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember, was that Route?
McBride.
McBride, thank you. McBride, any corrections, edits, or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We'll now move into appearances under item four for tonight's agenda. And the next agency is no stranger to the Town of Bladensburg because they have been giving us a lot of time and resources and attention, and we're truly grateful for that. That is with Maryland's Department of Transportation and State Highway Administration Team for our district, I believe District 3. And at this time, we'll turn it over to Ms. Hughes, would you like to tee everything up and then turn it over to your team accordingly?
I can. I am having some video challenges.
No worries. Well, I'll just give a quick recap and then let you take it from there. So we've had a number of meetings with the agency to talk about road improvements for S H A 769 Quincy Street. And there have been recommendations and requests for some measures to make this stretch of roadway safer for community members, whether it's drivers, pedestrians, and bikers. And we've received some positive feedback from the team in terms of options for that area. And to help support their efforts, because again, this is a S H A road and not a Town of Bladensburg road, we did want to reach out to our community, and we've done that in a couple of ways. We've had them previously at a work session several months ago. We followed that up with a community stakeholder meeting to get resident input, and then followed that up with a survey to affected residents in that particular area to again explain the proposed changes and options and to determine whether or not there's sufficient support for S H A to use to determine their next steps. And so we have given the survey with the help of Councilmember Brown and many staff, including Chief Collington's team. We've distributed the survey to Kennelworth Towers, Bladenwood condominiums, to all of the homes along Quincy Street, to the apartment buildings along Quincy Street, to the homes last night, what did we do, 53rd Street, 52nd Street? And again, touch back on Quincy Street. So we've made efforts to really make sure that the information is in the hands of all affected residents. And so with that, hopefully, Ms. Hughes, I was hoping your camera was working, but tried to buy some time, but I'll turn it over to you. Even without camera, you're a fantastic presenter.
I wish I could, I could share my face with you today so that you could see me. But I am happy to introduce my team and my presence, you know, it's here. And so it's a, it's a pleasure to join you today. Our office has been in conversation with Mayor James and with Richard. And so I'm trying to, you're, you're township clerk and township administrator. And we've really been working, you know, to, to, to listen to what Mayor James and, and, you know, what your community, you know, feedback and the meetings that we've had. And so we're here to do a presentation on, you know, some of the recommendations that we have that, that, you know, we'd like to move forward with. We do appreciate the survey that you did, Mayor James, and, you know, really think it's commendable with the responses that you were able to, you know, to secure. And, you know, this is definitely, I think, something that, you know, that, that the more comments that we get, we get over time and, you know, you know, the more the community has a chance to, just to know the, the work that you put into this, I, I think that there's a great benefit with that. Today, we have our, our acting district engineer, Derek Gunn, he's on the call with us today. And then we also have Peter Campanidis, and he's our Assistant District Engineer of Traffic. I mean, I'm going to let Peter start and, you know, give that, you know, the presentation for you.
Good evening, everyone. We're here to talk about round 769 C Quincy Street. We were approached by the Town of Bladensburg last summer regarding the extension of a project to put in sidewalk along this section from west of 48th Street to 52nd Avenue. In, in the course of time and the time that it has taken to do this project, the town also asked us to see if there was any feasible way to provide a temporary temporary facility as the design.
Sorry, excuse me, this is Councilmember, I can barely hear you. I'm trying to figure out if this on my end or?
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear him fine, Councilmember. Is it?
I can hear you fine and everybody else fine. I can't, but, but go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Is this better? I tell you, I, it's funny, I, when I, when I'm face to face with people, I get the same comment. I wasn't expecting to get it now too. I'm just so soft spoken. So, which is, which is fine.
So we're gonna pretend.
I saved my noise for later, but anyway.
I was gonna say, Peter, just pretend you're shouting at us at the football game. We won't be offended.
Thank you. Okay. So, so this is the existing conditions. As, as you know, all the roadways in the area, two-way traffic patterns. And what we're, and, and this is a closer look at the, the project limits. These were the original project limits, and this, I'll explain more about what that means in just a minute. So when we were looking at a temporary facility, it was found that there was no real way to provide a temporary facility other than to look at an alternative option which would change the way round 769 C currently functions. So the only way that we saw that we could install a, a temporary facility was to change the way 769 works now, which is a two-way street, and turn it into a one-way street. And it so happens that there is, there is a, a way to, to do that. And so what we're proposing is a one-way pattern that would go from west to east and eventually south along round 769 C. And in terms of trying to provide circulation and make it, make, ensure that it was safe for not only motorists that live along 769 C, but also we'll call it regionally, even though we're talking about Town of Bladensburg and, and, and some of the adjoining municipalities. So, so essentially, motors would be making right turns to get around and eventually get to Maryland 201 and then, and then also Maryland 450. So the, the pattern would kind of go from, from the north, 450, go down, and then you would get to round 201 Kennelworth Avenue that way. But, so we would, so this is how we would do this. We were originally looking at stopping the one-way pattern at Quincy Street. We had a meeting about this in April, and we got some very good feedback regarding some concerns with congestion at the intersection of 52nd Avenue and Quincy Street, and also concerns with cut-through traffic on Newton Street with, with the pattern. And, and so we, so at the request of Mayor James, about a month or so ago, we took a look into this and found that we were able to extend the one-way pattern further to the south and have it end right around the entrance to the cemetery off of 52nd Avenue. So we would, what we would do in order to ensure that the, that the appropriate signing is in place, we would provide signing along Maryland 201 to direct motorists to stay on round 201 and, and follow the signing for Maryland 450. And we would enhance the signing with, including Quincy Street to direct motorists onto that roadway. For motors who are on round 769 C heading north, and they, and, and they happen to miss the sign on Kennelworth Avenue, there would be signing along 52nd Avenue, warning motorists that the traffic pattern is going to change. The road would be closed at Newton Street, and we would provide the message that it's only for local and business traffic only. And we would provide signing to direct motors to use Lawrence Street if in the event that they do want to go and get to Maryland 450. So in, in addition to that, we're including no-through truck signing on 52nd Avenue. And then if all else fails, we have the trustee dead-end signs to tell motors they can't go beyond a certain point. But we would be providing the necessary positive barrier that would separate the travel lane, which would still be as it is now on heading eastbound on Quincy Street, 769 C. And the north or the, sorry, the westbound side would be converted to that pedestrian pathway. And we would ensure that we have all the signing to emphasize what the direction of travel is. And we will have the appropriate pedestrian crossing signing on the west side and on the east side. And with the traffic being projected to be less on the road with this traffic pattern change, it should also make that connection safer from Quincy, well, from Quincy Street to Quincy Street and then crossing to get to Bladensburg Elementary School from, from the back way, from that backpack. And now I will turn it over to Derek for additional words.
Thank you, Peter, and appreciate that, that wrap-up. So what, what we wanted to do is, and a lot of the folks on this call, they were on the previous town call, and they've probably seen this, and we just wanted to kind of shore up where we have been the last couple of months and tying up a few things, making sure that we're being responsive to a lot of the community concerns. And we think we've done that, but we still are, we're still very hopeful that we get more feedback and more input on, on this, on this, this design. I think what's happening now is we've been working in step with the town officials, and they've been working very hard to get the survey out to you folks and get some feedback there. So we need to incorporate that on our end. Just to try to outline, kind of outline where, where we go next, we think we have a workable plan here. We do still need to drill down in terms of the design and what that, what that protective treatment looks like. We want to make sure that pedestrians who use this path are protected very well from traffic and so forth. So that's what we're working through. We also still have to get approvals still, and this is a very important step from our Office of Traffic and Safety. They're more of our overarching authority figure when we have to do regulatory changes such as, such as these. So that's still in the pipeline. We have shared some of the preliminary survey results with that group. So we're getting some feedback, but we really need to make sure they're fully on board. One thing that they do look for is that we have at least majority community support before we move forward with these type projects, simply because it makes it, it makes it a better project and a better effort. So that's what we're kind of working towards as we go forward, getting those approvals. And also kind of tidying up that design piece. And then I think we'll have a project. And I guess the final step is us kind of working together with the town in terms of how we deliver this project. We know that, you know, we want this on the ground sooner than later. I think we share that. So we're looking at how we can best deliver this project. We, we have a couple of options right now. They're not crystallized. We have a couple of options, and just want to make sure we're going forward in a responsive manner. When Stina, I see that your camera's working now. That's, that's a good thing. So did you want to kind of finalize that?
My, my camera is working. And so I, I think, you know, Derek has really summed up, you know, like the status of, of where we are right now. And just the, you know, the feedback that we've been able to receive from the mayor and also, you know, from which it is really, I think, helped us a lot in being able to move this to the next stage. I do want to ask if there's any community, you know, input. Does anyone on the call have anything that they'd like to share that we can also make note of?
So Ms. Hughes, this is our work session, so the public is able to observe but not speak. They speak during the council meeting at seven. There's public comment. But what we can do is just encourage them, if they have not completed the survey, to do that. And then also to continue to email their feedback to us, so we have a track record of that and can pass it on to you. It's helpful to have that in writing to deliver to you and your team as we continue moving forward.
Great. Thank you for that. I saw, I saw in the chat that someone mentioned where tonight's meeting was. And so I thought that there was, you know, some additional input that was, was coming up. And but it's, it's good to know that that's something that you'll receive, you know, at seven when you have a subsequent meeting. Is there anything that the, you know, that your town council has that they would like to hear?
I was gonna wait for you all to finish and then go to our questions and make sure, okay, so we're down to four minutes. So just understanding that we don't yet know the design, but just want to ask if possible that at those pedestrian crossings, we can really make sure that we have the blinking lights and things to really make it extremely visible for pedestrians seeking to cross both at the Kennelworth ramps and then further up as Quincy Street splits off and 52nd starts at the curb. And then in terms of the, the separation, we're very interested in that. That came up during the public meeting that you all had with us from both the council as well as our residents, making sure that whatever that barrier is, is safe but also has aesthetic value. So again, if you could just keep us in the loop on that, that I think that would be super helpful. And I want to go to the council members with their hands up. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor James, and thanks for that great presentation. The, the question and concern that I still have is the pedestrian pathway. Because, and, and what, I guess, what remedies are going to be used for the water? And there's a lot of greenery on its side as well. And yeah, so I mean, that's, that, that's my concern, that. And then time timelines for the permanent fix. And the, the other thing, just at Quincy Street right there, Quincy and 52nd, right there in the area, yes. So that Quincy Street will still be a two-way though, right? Is that correct? So.
Yes, Councilmember.
Yes, on the town, on the town portion, it will be a two-way street.
It will still be two-way, right?
Yes, 52nd Avenue, the, we will be continuing with the one-way pattern up until the cemetery.
Right, okay.
So it'll go through Newton Street also.
Okay. And Councilmember Brown, on the pathway, sorry, I'm talking fast because I want to make sure we get to Councilmember Rout's question because we're running short on time, but I did ask if they could explore the use of ARPA fundings to support the construction of a true sidewalk there, so it's elevated and not even with the roadway. And Ms. Hughes is looking into that.
But, but my, but my thing is that if you're going to use funds for that, why not use funds to more, to, to, towards more of the permanent fix? Because you're going to put that up, and then you're going to have to tear it down and redo it and spend more money. So that is just my, my concern with, with, with that.
Yeah, it's a valid concern. What we're, so this, this, this proposal is temporary. And this was really the, the quickest way we could provide some type of a facility that would provide that connection between Kennelworth Tower Apartments and, and the, the back of the school path.
Absolutely. We, we wanted to, you know, move forward with something that, that we could have for you.
Councilmember Rout, I see your hand as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms., excuse me, I get that, but something is, you know, sometimes something is like, is it, is, is it a really fixed? Because like I said, unless there's some remediation with that, that water and, and all of that, all of the problems that, that are on that side with the pedestrian pathway is just still going to be a muddy.
Right. And Councilmember, they did address that they would also incorporate a drainage solution for the walkway, again temporarily while the larger infrastructure project is being resolved. I realize that's not what you want to hear, but it's a little bit of progress just to help. And in addition, we're installing rain barrels at the top of the hill to help with that runoff as well. But we do have to move on because we have a full agenda, and I want to get to Councilmember Rout, Councilmember.
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. Thank you, State Highway Administration, for all of your continued work. Back when the previous council worked on this, I was working with this, with Mayor James, and I also surveyed some of the community members. I do share the same concern, but a different pivot is that when we first spoke about the timeline, it was going to be over like two fiscal years or two cycles, and that's a long year for, that's a long time for a temporary solution to be up. So I am in favor of some type of sidewalk with rain barrels or something just to, because at first we talked about these barriers, the orangey barriers at first, and that wasn't secure. So are we still talking about the same timeline over two fiscal years? And what, in your opinion, state highway's opinion, is the most safest way for an elevated raised solution so that the children are not in the street, so that they are not being hit, but have access, have a safe access to the back of the school?
Well, I'll, I'll try to respond to everything I heard very quickly. I know that agenda-wise, the, the town has to move on. So for the drainage aspect, like the mayor mentioned, we are, our maintenance forces are looking at some trench work. That'll be done very soon, and we think that will be responsive to some of those concerns for the, at least on the temporary side. The A R P scenario, when Stina's working with our Secretary's Office, just to try to understand a little bit more about the breadth of that and the scope and what that can entail and will not entail. So once we get a little bit more information, hopefully sooner than later, we'll share that with the mayor and some of the, the officials on this call. The sidewalk and the elevated side, and also the treatments at the termini points. Again, we're kind of still working through the, the design element right now. I think the analytical pieces, we're pretty much sure it up on that. So we are working our way through the design. So once we get a little bit further along, it'll probably happen in step with what the Office of Traffic and Safety is doing. And we'll, we'll know a little bit more about what we can and can't do. But I think overall, our overarching goal is to make sure that even if it's a temporary treatment, it's safe and that folks feel comfortable using it. So that's what we're working towards, and we'll keep everyone updated.
And the timeline, please, sir, the timeline?
Sure. So I heard something about two fiscal years. That might have been more for the ultimate project, for the temporary one. Like the mayor mentioned, we're trying to move this forward a little bit quicker than that because we know there's an immediate need. So with the ultimate project, my understanding where there were, it wasn't so much the funding. There were some design challenges that we have to work, work through together. But once we kind of get through that, I think we'll have a better idea about that implementation as well, so.
And Mr. Gunn, on the longer-term project, because we did push last fall to get just a rough idea. We know things happen. And last fall, we were towed safely about 24-ish months on that longer-term project. And so that was the concern, not waiting and not offering a safe solution that is walk, to protect our pedestrians walking in that area. So again, we definitely appreciate you all joining tonight and look forward to just getting more information, especially on the funding for ARPA to actually put in an actual sidewalk that I think would definitely alleviate some concerns. But I will say, even with talking to residents in that area last night and just explaining the walk path, even that was an improvement for those who have young children and are truly concerned about their safety in that area. So again, we thank you for listening to us. We know you can't say yes to everything, but we're still going to keep pushing. So thank you for bearing with us.
Well, you know, and I would say it's more than bearing with you. We, we really appreciate the amount of time that you took to do the survey and, you know, working with us and giving us the feedback about some ideas that the council had as well. And so, you know, we're, we're really partnering on this, and that, and I know that, you know, we'll, we'll continue to work on it.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll let you.
My screen, I'll stop sharing my screen.
Yes. Thank you so much, Ms. Hughes, Mr. Gunn, and Mr. Campanidis again. And I think I saw your rouge on as well. Yes, thank you for joining as well. Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Myers, for also joining us. But you all enjoy the rest of your evening, and we'll keep rolling through tonight's agenda, and I'm sure we'll be in touch via email.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Oh, Claudia, is there anything that you want to say before we? Okay, it just looks like she was saying hello.
Okay, all right. Thank you again.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, finally. I have been pressing all kinds of buttons. I had to drown by the phone. I do apologize.
No worries. We're glad you figured it out.
And I think, thank you, Derek, for, for covering about the schedule. I won't confuse anybody by adding more to it. It is going to take some time. We do have some right-of-way and as well as utility challenges that we have to navigate through. And that's what, and environmental permits that we have to clear before proceeding to the construction phase. And that is why Peter and his team put together that interim improvement to provide, provide a dedicated path for students and those who, who want to navigate the corridor. So I do appreciate everything that you and your team have done, Mayor, because it's, it's really great and refreshing when we can work together to provide a need. to provide a need for the community and to see such support from the community. It helps us be able to get the, the funding that's needed and the approvals needed because we have the support. We don't have to uh, go through those challenges of trying to get everyone to co-sign to a project. So I look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you.
Uh, engineer for project development. So just, uh, good for that.
Yes. So she is our point person, especially on this longer-term project. So Carl, yeah, Ms. Claudine Myers is an ally. But thank you all so much. Once again, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Alright, take care, everybody.
Take care. Uh, so to a bit of a lighter, but still important project, I would like to turn this next item over to Mr. Jeffries, our marketing specialist. Where we look pretty good for 280 years old. So, uh, Ray, we'll turn it over to you to talk about our 280th anniversary.
Thank you, Mayor James. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, happy 7/11, happy free slurpee day. I just wanted to briefly go over our 280th anniversary planning. So since our Blaisberg fireworks event has concluded, we have jumped straight into the 280th planning for this year. And, uh, so the official date of our anniversary is October 29th. However, the Blaisberg Warfarin Park is taken for that day. So right now we're looking at the October 22nd date for Saturday, October 22nd. I've also been thinking about times for this event, whether I want it to be like a full-day kind of festival event or a condensed event like fireworks. So right now I'm looking at the times from four o'clock PM to eight o'clock PM. Also, my, I'm exploring drone show options as well as sponsors to cover the cost for a drone show. And, um, those are just some brief updates I have at the moment, but if you guys have any suggestions or comments, feel free to email me or call me at any time during this planning process.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. And one more time, can you give us the date so our community can write that on their calendars and just kind of hold it?
Yeah. So the tentative date at the moment is October 22nd. And for times, this is not official, but I'm looking at four o'clock PM to eight o'clock PM.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I appreciate you, uh, looking into some options to make it a little more, um, distinguishable from the fireworks event with the drone light show or something like that. Um, and look forward to the research that you bring back to share with the council. I see, uh, council member Rowd has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. Um, it's a question slash comment. Um, do you think we could consider a community parade? Because I know the police department, the community action team for a couple of years have been trying, um, to work on this parade. And I think to show true community, um, spirit, celebration, I would like to propose that recommendation. It's to my understanding, there used to be a parade back in the day. Um, and so I think that would be, um, great. And then, um, I also would send you some suggestions with naming some sponsor levels. Like a, like Batillion or, you know, something Bladensburgian-ish, you know, so that we can have different levels.
Great. Thank you, council member, uh, Rowd. Council member Brown, I see your hand as well.
Yeah, just real quick, because I know it's October and, um, when is daylight savings time? So because it, I think it starts getting dark. Is that, y'all shaking your heads?
It's no more.
Are they, I mean, so that the bill, the bill passed?
Yeah, this, um, early in the spring, yeah.
Okay, well.
Was like, I was shocked because I asked the same thing.
Okay, because I knew, yeah, I, I knew that they were voting on it, but I didn't know that it had actually passed. Okay, well, that's great.
I think it's, it's going to be weird for me.
Yeah, it's going to be weird, but I'm glad it's going to be light longer instead of dark at 4:30.
Right. I agree. Uh, Chief Colling, okay. Thank you, council member Brown. Chief Collington?
There you go. Uh, good afternoon, uh, man, uh, council colleagues and community. I just want to circle back on, uh, what, uh, council member Rowd brought up about the, uh, the town parade, uh, the Blainsbury Parade. Uh, I think that is a fantastic idea. Um, and just to throw a suggestion out there. I've worked with, with large communities, um, committees that, that put these things together and bringing the community into the fold for the planning and, um, marketing as well as going out trying to find, uh, solicit donations and sponsors. The community bring a lot of good ideas to the table. And I would just like to offer that suggestion that we bring in our community members and form a committee for the Blainsbury Parade Day. Uh, it has a major impact and you will see like the resources that they can go out, the donations they can bring back. And also the attendees in the parade, the participants. So I, I would just like to offer that, uh, great suggestions and ideas come from the community.
Great. Thank you, chief. And I just want to say, I really appreciate the receptiveness to the parade idea. Because as council member Rowd mentioned, this was a annual tradition back, back when we used to have Bladensburg Day. And I know when my husband was on the council, he pushed to get the staff to do the parade. And it was just like, oh, Mayor, we don't want to do that. But to have a team, I, I was just watching the body language and to see the, you know, the enthusiasm and not just like grumbling. Really appreciate that receptiveness because, um, as I said, it was done very well in the past. And it's a huge way to get our students involved, different pockets of the community. And I think it's time, and particularly coming out of the pandemic, and I didn't say we're out, but in trying to come out of it. What we saw at the Independence Day fireworks celebration is that people are starting to feel more comfortable gathering. But also the emotional lift that they get and then the sense of pride that they get when they see their own community highlighted in such a positive day, a positive way. It just yields huge benefits. And so, um, again, I appreciate the receptiveness to bringing that back. And really learning how we can advance it. Perhaps this will motivate the high school to get the band going again because they've been on hiatus. So, um, look forward to continuing to work on this and, and make it a wonderful 280th anniversary. So, Mr. Jeffries, want to come back to you to wrap us up. Any other things that you need from the council for tonight? I realize there's no financial decisions we need to make tonight. You just wanted to, um, present the overall idea.
Yes, thank you. I see, uh, council member Blunt has her hand up.
Uh, oh, sorry, I missed it. Go ahead, council member Blunt.
Thank you, um, thank you, Jeffrey. Um, I'm just want to say Jeffrey needs a camera for this, please. I'm just saying, he needs a, he needs a decent camera and that is phone for these events. I mean.
Or hire a videographer, right? Get the videographer. That was, yeah, we learned that that night. We were like, yeah, we should have had a videographer. So it is noted. Thank you for pointing that out. But again, Ray, thank you so much. We look forward to working with you on this very, very unique opportunity. I believe we're the oldest municipality in the county, so we are going to throw a celebration like they have not seen. And look forward to, uh, you doing a great job on it as you did, um, on July 1st. So thank you with that. Not sure if you're sticking around, but, um, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mayor James. Thank you, council.
Absolutely. Um, the, we're now in the section of the meeting for old business and would like to pivot over to the 57th Avenue paving project update. I think Mr. Charnovich mentioned, was, are you there, Mr. Charnovich?
Oh, yes, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was waiting for you to give me the, give me the go-ahead. But yeah, I, I'll, I'll give the update. And, uh, real quickly, just wanted to point out on that last topic, just for the sake of mayor, councillor, both on the call. I have been a part of, uh, parade planning before with, uh, with law enforcement, with volunteer committees. Uh, and I agree that it becomes a very, it can be a lot of work, but it can also end up being a very great, uh, great community building, um, event. And especially for something like this, uh, with the 280th celebration, I think it's a, a wonderful idea and, uh, look forward to being a part of it. So I just wanted to point that out. So 57th Avenue project, um, which maybe hopefully will be done before the parade starts, right? So, uh, kidding, kidding aside, um, so we are, we are currently in the, uh, still i- in a summary sense, we are still in the design phase of the project. Uh, and Mayor James asked me to do a quick timeline of what's, um, where, where, where the planning has, has been going for this. So, um, and I did a quick write-up. Uh, around June 9th, uh, our town engineer and I had a kickoff call with, um, Mr. Hall. Uh, it was a several hour call, in fact. We talked over a lot of the details of the project, uh, things of that nature. Uh, then the, the following week was, uh, the Ocean, Ocean City Convention. And our engineering, uh, team, they were all at the convention. So, uh, they were working to schedule a, um, a site meeting with Mr. Hall. And they, uh, had to schedule that for after the, uh, convention when they returned. So that was held, uh, the week of June 20th. And, uh, at that point, uh, after, after they had their site meeting, um, the, uh, engineering firm gave me a very detailed proposal, which I, uh, reviewed in great detail. In fact, I had to go a back and forth, go between and ask them to amend the proposal. Um, it's, it's actually my first real project here, working with our, our town engineer. And I wanted to, uh, you know, familiarize myself with, with, um, with their operations, with their proposal, with things of that nature. Uh, and, uh, they lis- listened to my, my suggestions and ideas and resented me over a proposal that separated the, the design work cost versus the, uh, post, uh, post-construction award cost of, of, of the project. So I signed the, um, I received the revised cost proposals around June 30th, uh, the day before our, our wonderful July 1st celebration. And then I, I signed off on the design on the 5th of July. So, um, it is my understanding that the, uh, design of the, um, the road work, which takes a lot of, a lot of engineering for this project as a, as a side note. So the design work is scheduled to be completed in the second half of July. And, uh, I, I informed the mayor that in tandem with that, I am working on the RFP that will pair with the, uh, with the bid documents that will say, you know, please refer to these documents. And then the contractor will take those to submit their, um, submit their proposal to the, to the town. So I did, um, also mention to the mayor that, uh, you know, unfortunately we have our meeting today and then we are in August recess. Then our next meeting up till September the 12th. So, um, and I don't, I don't know, Mayor, how you want to approach this, but I guess my recommendation probably would be to consider, I don't want to, I'm not suggesting to schedule this right now, but I'm hopeful that the mayor and council could work with me on, uh, possibly scheduling a, a special meeting that, uh, would convene virtually. Maybe it should not take more than hopefully five to 10 minutes. I would plan to have all the ducks in a row to award the bid at that point. And then we would, uh, proceed to try and get construction moving in August. Uh, I did talk with Mr. Hall about the concept of, uh, like a phased approach where as long as we can get done the, um, uh, the paving work strictly, uh, that, that area to finish that before school would start. That could help us in, in the big picture and then finish all of the, uh, the, the other incidentals, uh, that, that, that the project, um, smaller parts of the project. But there are, I think there are 30 ADA ramps that are also going to be adjusted for this. So this is not a, not a small, small-scale endeavor. So I'm going to make sure those are, um, those are done to spec and those are done the, 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 the right way. So, uh, I think with that, I think that is the, that is kind of the update at this point. And, uh, um, hopefully we can, uh, get the plans in, get, get it, get it out to bid and, and, uh, schedule a special meeting hopefully to get it, get an award. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Charnovich, for the project update. Council, as you may recall, our, um, ask of staff was to prep us so that we would have proposals back tonight to review. And because that didn't happen, I thought it was important to just have Mr. Charnovich walk us through the steps that have occurred up to this point and understand, um, what options we have for moving forward. And particularly given, um, while public schools now go back after Labor Day, Elizabeth Seaton goes back. They start orientation, it's usually maybe the third week of August and they start first. Um, and given they would directly feel the impact of any, um, construction going on at the start of the school year. So, um, in talking to Mr. Hall last week, he did indicate, uh, once shovels are in the ground, it'll take about a week, um, up to nine days to complete the actual work. And so as Mr. Charnovich said, we'll make sure that it's communicated to you all when we have those proposals. And if you would be able to just do a special meeting to approve them, um, then that would, uh, be fantastic. The challenge is if we can't get this done until the school year, I'm of the opinion and others may disagree, but after going through 58th Avenue and not getting that done over summer, the impact and danger it posed to, um, our students, their parents, the, the staff. I just, I don't think it's smart to go down that road again if we can't get this done before the start of the school year. Council member Rowd.
Thank you, Mayor James. Um, this year, the first day of school is August 29th. So it's before Labor Day and I don't think that we need to disrupt, um, the school. Um, the impact of, for the transportation for school, um, especially with three, four large schools in that area. So I don't think if we can't get it done before August 29th, then I think we should put it off.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, so any further questions from the council? Okay. Uh, the next item is Bostwick House Funding and Project Management RFP. Uh, Mr. Charnovich, I'll just give a quick opening on this, but given the amount of funding that the town council has received for the restoration and preservation of the Bostwick House, um, I wanted to bring it up to the council, just a recommendation to secure a project manager who can specifically focus on this and not, um, rely on, on the limited staff that we have. There are some experts and some have already reached out who can actually help us in that role where they're reporting directly to staff in the council on the project, but also helping us to ensure that our stakeholders are working in their areas of expertise and really managing that. We have some who are very good with fundraising and that's what they want to do to help with the preservation. But then you have others who their expertise is more on the education side and helping us to determine, once this is up and operational, how do we leverage it to educate the students and tie it to the library and, and, um, actually leverage it, but also help build that educational content. And, um, so again, just realizing we're limited, but we can't sit back and have zero movement on this project specifically because now we have the funding from the state. We have to show forward progress. And so that individual, if the council was amenable to getting a project manager, could really help report out to us. And that way we keep our state delegation informed of our progress. So they don't feel as though we gave this money to Bladensburg and we don't know what's happening with this project. And so just wanted to, um, get input from the council on that recommendation. And before I go to council, Mr. Charnovich, did you want to add anything there?
Um, sure. I would just, I would say from the administrative side, I completely agree, uh, with that concept. Because, you know, it's always great to, you know, put people in positions who are, you know, is, have expertise in, in, in those particular fields. And I think I mentioned to you previously, Mayor, in one of my prior lives, I worked for eight years with the Montgomery County, um, Historic Preservation Commission in Montgomery County. And, uh, there were days when I didn't have sort of this person to pivot to and turn to with these types of issues that are, are a certain kind of niche. So I think it's a, um, it would be, uh, a very wise decision, uh, with, with, with the, with this type of funding to, uh, utilize, um, a consultant or a consultant firm, project manager, whatever we want to call it, that can spearhead, um, spearhead the, the, um, implementation of these, these projects and these funds. So thank, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Charnovich. And your statement reminded me, I didn't clarify, the specific need is for someone with expertise in preservation, historical preservation. Because that is different, um, a very different skill set than just general project management. And so that's why I'm, you know, advocating for someone with that expertise. Uh, council member Brown?
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just really quick, um, was Aman Trust not supposed to be, wasn't Aman Trust supposed to be kind of helping us and in that, uh, somewhat of, of a capacity?
Yeah, that's a great question. They are definitely interested stakeholders, but, um, I think they have very specific expertise and just having someone that is specifically accountable to the council and the staff, but works with those stakeholders like your Aman Trust and other organizations would help us. With, they can certainly bid, but it's not to say that, um, they would. Uh, as I said, there's been others who have reached out and have, uh, some experience, uh, working with specific restoration of other projects and at a bigger scale. And so I don't want to limit ourselves. I think if we just open it up and get the proposals, we can review and see what sort of experts come back to us. Councilmember Rout.
Thank you, Mayor James. I believe I recall us speaking about this early on in the budget sessions that we said that we were going to bid this out, um, through an RFP process um, for the purposes of our two big projects, which the capital projects, which is our town hall and our Bostwick House. So this would just be in line with the approved budget that we stated that we were going to do. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Tenelli, but I do recall that we voted on, um, this as an RFP.
I am looking right now, we, um, I'll get right back to you on that. I'm trying to find it right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tenelli. So we'll jump to the next item, but if you don't mind, just waving at us and, and we'll circle back. Um, so we now are on to new business. And the first item is a resolution, uh, concerning installation of speed cameras on state Maryland, state of Maryland roads. Uh, Chief Collington, I believe this is yours.
Yes, good afternoon, uh, Mayor, Council, uh, colleagues and community. Um, yes, we are proposing to have this, uh, emergency ordinance, uh, passed and hoping it will get passed tonight. Uh, in light of our, uh, efforts to get our speed camera program up and running, we realize we focused on the school zones. However, um, we are seeing more car crashes after school hours out on our main roads because we have a lot of thoroughfares that come through town of Bladensburg, uh, Kenworth Avenue, uh, Napoli's Road, where we deal with a lot of, uh, uh, speeders, uh, out here, uh, after hours. So we are proposing to have our speed cameras put out on the state highway in the residential areas because at night, uh, we do have pedestrians out walking on our, like a Napoli's Road and Kenworth Avenue, like Kenworth Towers. Uh, so we do have residents, um, out walking at night. And we know that these speed cameras will slow people down. Um, because some people, a lot of people think this, the cameras will run from six AM to eight PM. And after that, you know, they just start speeding because they think no one's out there, the cameras aren't working. So we are really proposing that we get this passed. Uh, we are looking to start our speed camera program in the next couple of weeks, definitely before the school, the start of the new school year. And we want to make sure we have our, uh, cameras up and running so that we can alert motorists to slow down in our residential areas while they're traveling out on Kenworth Avenue, a- as well as our streets inside the, uh, community. Um, we get a lot of speeders there as well, but to cut down on the car crashes and, and pedestrians being struck out here on Kenworth Avenue. And I do recall one vividly, uh, resident that recently just got hit, uh, out here on, uh, our road. So we are encouraging our residents to get out and walk, but I know they don't feel safe walking out on, with all these cars speeding up and down the road. And we know that the police with our staff can't be everywhere all the time, but we can hold people accountable when they break these speed, the posted speed limit signs, uh, speed limits. So we just want to, uh, we asking the council to consider passing this emergency, uh, ordinance tonight, um, so that we can get the cameras out on the state roads as well. Because as it stands right now, um, again, um, in the school zones, there's, there's six AM to eight PM. And we know speeders, uh, after hours, they really crank it up after those, uh, you know, late in the night when they think no one's out there. But however, we do have pedestrians, children walking in these residential areas that are on state highways like four fifty and Kenworth Avenue.
Great, thank you, Chief. And also on seven sixty-nine C, it's another state road.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Rout, you had a question. I know, I couldn't resist them. He mentioned the state roads and that's where it can be most challenging, so, but.
Um, I just have a question. As a vendor that we are going with, um, are they mobile? Are these cameras mobile so that if we get like a, you know, like if we get a pattern of like, you know, people get hit to these cameras, can we move them? Can you help me under, and we haven't talked about this in a while?
Uh, yes, so that, that's a good question, Councilmember Rout. And the answer to your question is yes, they are mobile cameras, we can move them around. Uh, when we, we started this, uh, initiative back in twenty nineteen and it's finally coming to fruition, uh, this year, uh, at the start of this school year. So I, I just want to thank the, the community and I want to thank the council for definitely having patience while we went through this process. But we are finally getting it up and running. The first cameras will be here and they will be mobile. Uh, they will be here in the next couple of weeks. And like I said, definitely before they, they have promised us, they will have these cameras ready to go by the start of the new school year. And if I can just, um, like the mayor alluded to before, when we had this conversation about speed cameras, right, the same day we had a council meeting, a fifteen-year-old young lady from Bladensburg High School was hit right there at fifty-seven and, uh, fifty-eighth Avenue. So there is a need to have these cameras in the community to slow people down and also hold them accountable.
And Chief, just to tag on briefly, that was traumatic for people who witnessed it because they saw her body go up in the air and come down on the pavement. And this is a child, a teenager. So, um, I'm definitely looking forward to moving this forward. Uh, Mr. Tarnavich, did you want to add something? And then I'll, um, your hand just raised, was that an accident?
No, no, I didn't want, no, I did want to add something, but I can, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Blanc can go first and I can tie in later if that's okay.
Yep, thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm real, mine is real quick because I know we're outside of the five minutes allotted for this. Um, but, uh, Chief, how many, how many cameras? And then, you know, to residents who, or maybe some have been in opposition to the cameras. But my thing is that if you, if you do the speed limit, then, you know, if we all do the speed limit, you know, we want to get the tickets, I mean, we, we all, as we drive, we drive, as we go through, um, speed limit, um, areas jurisdictions all the time. And then what do we do? Let's start out. But, uh, yeah, how many?
So we initially in the contract asked for three mobile cameras. So that's what we're getting, we started out with three.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Blanc.
Of course, would two, would they get one? Would I?
Yes, absolutely. And that's the benefit, um, from the presentation that we can move them around as needed, especially in those school zones. So absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, even though most of the town technically is in the school zone, but still. Um, Mr. Tarnavich, did you have one more thing?
Oh, sure, thank you, Mayor. This is, this is more just housekeeping than anything else. So, um, I did receive, um, look, learning every day here as I go. And my, my new role is, uh, acting town administrator. Uh, so I found out today that we had passed an ordinance in twenty nineteen related to this. And, uh, collaborating with Chief Collington and our town attorney, uh, Ms. Ferguson, uh, this afternoon, uh, we received, um, the emergency actual language for the emergency ordinance. Now, I did forward this on, uh, to, uh, uh, Mayor James and the town council a couple, a few hours ago, and not, not usually how I like to, like to operate here at the last moment at all. Uh, but I did want to point out that when the regular meeting rolls around, I do have the, uh, the language that I will read, uh, into the record, uh, as part of this ordinance because I know the importance, the Chief Collington and, uh, uh, and, and this council and mayor to get this done in a, in an emergency sense, because we're, especially with the journey in, um, August. So we have sixty days till the next meeting, so, um, I just want to point that out, that when, when that comes up on the agenda, I will read that emergency ordinance into the record that was drafted by, uh, legal counsel. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that, uh, update, Mr. Tarnavich. And so we are at six thirty-two and I want to make sure, um, we have a few minutes in between, um, especially if, because I know some of us came straight off work time and I want to make sure everyone has a chance to read the ordinance. Um, Chief, we're over to you for the purchase of trauma kits for town of Bladensburg schools.
Yes, thank you again. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Council and colleagues and community. So I just want to open up to say that, uh, you know, we in twenty twenty-two, we are seeing more and more school shootings becoming more prevalent, uh, around the country and particularly in our state. Uh, so we have one in our county so far that I'm aware of this year. So we, uh, I met with the, um, with my command staff and training coordinator. And we came up with a, uh, one thing that we haven't heard across the country in this county, training our, uh, educators, our teachers. Because, uh, when we go into these schools, uh, we're not going to have a Uvalde, uh, uh, incident in, in Maryland and Prince George County and Bladensburg particularly. Uh, we know that all the schools, uh, primarily fall under the jurisdiction of Prince George County. But I can assure you, as long as I am chief, we won't be waiting for the county to make a decision for us to go in and save a child or a teacher. So we came up with a, uh, and I don't want to take full credit for this, uh, but we came up with a fantastic, um, brilliant, uh, idea. And that is to train our teachers. Because when, when law enforcement go into these, uh, schools and active shooter situations, uh, we have one mission, that's to save lives, but we have four objectives. And that is to locate the threat, identify the threat, isolate the threat and terminate the threat. So while we are doing that, uh, we are going past, uh, and God forbid the unthinkable happen where the, there was some students or, or teachers shot in the class. We, we don't, we cannot unfortunately stop and go back and administer, uh, first aid. So what we have met, what we met with Port Towns, we met with International High School, Langley Park, Elizabeth Seaton. And what we sat down with the educators and we, uh, 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 had the conversation with them that, uh, we will provide a trauma kit and we would train each teacher. We, we figured there's about six hundred and sixty school teachers in, in the town of Bladensburg. Um, and I know one elementary school here in Bladensburg have over eleven hundred students. So we are proposing to get trauma kits and we're hoping that the, the council will consider, um, using maybe some of the ARPA funds to furnish the kits. Um, so we're asking for approximately, uh, six hundred trauma kits. They, they are priced at sixty-eight dollars per bag. Uh, we're asking for, uh, a total of forty-three thousand dollars to be spent uh, so that we will have, uh, a trauma kit placed in each classroom. And what that would do is while we are going down, what we found, um, lessons learned in these mass shootings, school shootings particularly, is the students or the teachers are bleeding out. So we can train our teachers to, while we are going down terminating the threat, to administer that tourniquet, that, uh, second wound patch, those goals. Uh, we're going to teach them, our, our staff, uh, had, we are trained in trauma kit training. But we also approve, these trainers are approved through the Maryland Training, uh, Police Commission. And that is who set the standards across the state. And our instructors, uh, certified in training. So what we want to do now is we want to save lives if the unthinkable happen, that each teacher in each one of the schools in Bladensburg will be able to grab the trauma kit and start administering first aid while law enforcement continued to stop the threat that, um, started in the schools. So with that, you know, we are saying that, you know, we look back at history, according to education, we, there were thirty-four school shootings, uh, in twenty twenty-one. Most of the incidents occurred, uh, once school reopened. They had twenty-four in the month of August, um, in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty. So we see now that it's become, it's hitting our state now, it's hitting our county now. Uh, so we don't want to be behind the eight ball when it's time for us to, uh, go into these schools again. Like I said, we won't have a Uvalde or any of those other incidents. There won't be a delayed response by our team. We, we have, and we are thankful to the council for allowing us to get the equipment that we need in time, in terms of the, uh, the, the long barrel rifles, but as well as providing the resources that we can get to training. And what we're asking today is that you consider, um, letting us spend forty-three thousand dollars on six hundred bags to train over six hundred and sixty school teachers. And I can tell you that the schools that I, I've mentioned that we met with, they were excited. They can't wait. They've been calling us, asking us, when can we get this done? And we promised them that it, you know, we would come in and we would train them. Uh, it's as long as we get the resources that we need. And that's providing a trauma kit in each classroom. And each teacher in the town of Bladensburg will be trained in how to administer first aid on a student, including placing a, a, a tourniquet, a, a second wound patch and goals and everything else. In addition to that, we're going to also teach them, uh, how to improvise if the unthinkable happened and there are multiple victims.
We definitely, yeah, I'm sorry, we're like at seven minutes, I'm sorry. We're losing time on the meeting, but we definitely understand the importance. And I know the council also received your memo that you sent, just really breaking down the cost per unit and, and the reason why this is important. So we definitely, um, understand and you conveyed it very well, the importance of this and especially in speaking to you. So, um, if there are, I don't see any questions. I think you've talked to some of us offline as well about it. I think you have a lot of support for this. Um, we know this just needs to happen. We're in a, a pan, uh, a, a national epidemic of violence and it's really sad. Um, so we definitely want to do what we can to help as a council. Uh, the next item, Chief, is also.
Mayor, real, real quick.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Brown.
Last, last minute, just real quick. And just, are there any, any, any additional, um, county, uh, or state funds for, for training or something of that? To help provide that as well, that's all. Doesn't have to be answered now, just don't have to be answering this, but kind of putting a question out here.
Okay, alright.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Rout.
There's some federal funds that is coming down out of the new Firearms Safer Communities Act that just got acted, enacted, but it's not going to trickle down, um, at the level for training. Um, and there, there, it hasn't even been a state expenditure plan as far as it relates for the Safer Communities Act. But there is some funding, but the states have not yet determined how they're going to spend that. Because, I mean, literally there was just a celebration today at the White House, so.
Thank you for that. And I think that just further, um, demonstrates the beauty of the ARPA funding and giving it directly to the municipalities because we don't have to wait for funding to trickle down as normally would be done. We have the ability to see the needs of the community and, you know, discuss them, come together and deploy those resources much quicker, much quicker than, um, the traditional route of trying to go after those dollars through grants and other opportunities. Uh, Councilmember Brown, your hand is still up, did you have another question? Okay, so everyone is six forty-one, we have, um, four items remaining, sorry, three items. We're, um, now on to police reform laws taking effect July first, twenty twenty-two. Chief, I believe this is back to you.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make this one quick. Uh, there have been, uh, over twenty-one, uh, new laws passed, uh, from down General Assembly, from the House and Senate. Um, one particular that I will talk about tonight real quick, it is the, uh, the discipline tracking system. I brought this to the town in 2019. It's a system called IA Pro is where you can track all discipline electronically. But now it's become, July 1, it's become mandatory that every municipality have, every police department have a discipline tracking system, i.e. the IA Pro system. What the new IA Pro system is now a citizen can log in, they, they made it mandatory today. Citizens must have a portal that they can log into and they can put their name, they can put the date, they can put the location, they can type in their incident. And it goes straight into a tracking system. So, you know, you've heard citizens say, I put in a complaint, I never heard anything back. So now with this system, again, the IA Pro system is back again. And now it's mandatory that municipalities and police departments must have a discipline tracking system. And I, I brought this up before. Again, it's slightly higher now, but the system is about $9,400 and it's about a $1,700 yearly maintenance fee. And what that is, obviously for upgrades, for training and things like that. But it is now a mandatory from the legislation that we must have a discipline tracking system, which today we do not have electronically. We use like spreadsheets. So we need to make sure that we do a better job and give the citizens the opportunity to log into the portal and launch their, their complaints.
Chief, that's fantastic. And I realize the cost is higher, but honestly, we're, the, the local government is here to provide services and being able to pay for that. So our residents have the assurance that if they have an incident, they can go in, put that information in so it can actually be tracked and not be lost. I feel like giving people that peace of mind and then the confidence that it's followed through with goes a very long way as we try to continue improving our public safety in Bladensburg. So thank you for that update. You look like you had another thing to say.
Well, no, I was just going to say that we want to maintain our transparency and our accountability.
Absolutely.
We want to be transparent with our community. And this gives them, this empowers them to now be able to track their complaint and get, and see it always to the end.
Yeah, totally agree. That is fantastic. The next item that we want to cover is the free mental health first aid training. So sort of on public safety still, Councilmember Routh.
Thank you so much, Mayor James. Given the incidents that is taking place nationally with the violence, we do see a parallelism with regard to mental health. And so I came in May to speak to you all briefly just about mental health awareness training as well. Mr. Tarnovich had attended a meeting with the, the organization that works very closely with Senator Malcolm Augustine as it relates to mental health support to communities and organizations. And there is a free mental health first aid training that they have available. And it's also available in the Train the Trainer model. Of course, you would have to get the certification first. And it's just like how you have your CPR card. It is an actual way that individuals can respond to mental health and crises. And so at the federal level, we recognize that there needs to be more training. This is also in the legislation as well, to the tune of 99, more like $99 billion nationally is being spent on mental health awareness training. And so this grantee, I have a relationship with the grantee, but it's going to be free. We have to have a class of 30. I think that we can do this, fill up a class with staff. And then if staff is not available, open it up to community members. The council can participate and it's a certification. So that's the short.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Routh. And I appreciate you talking with me earlier today about it and saying initially your thought was just open it up to the Port Towns because I realized they were on the initial meeting that you set up, which was great and building that collaboration. I was expressing to Councilmember Routh, but because we have more staff than our Port Towns partners, I could see us filling 30 slots easily, especially when you factor in, I'm pretty sure most of the council would take advantage of the training, our directors, members of the PD and so forth. I could see us filling that out. But if not, then expanding it to allow members of the community to be able to sign up, but at least trying to get our staff trained up first. And again, if, we don't want to waste this opportunity. So if we can't fill the 30, opening it up to the community, including our Port Towns partners, might be the way to go. So just wanted to throw that on the table to see if folks would be open to it. And then if so, work with Mr. Tarnovich to figure out how we do a little sign up with staff in the council, whether it's just email Ms. Diane, let her collect, you know, the list and that way she can let Councilmember Routh know who's the point of contact with the partner to try to get this set up because there is some pre-work that you do have to conduct. If you're going to take the training, you can't just show up for the training. And so it is important that we know who's going to be a part so we can get those pre-materials to you so that you can be prepared to get the most out of the actual training. Any questions from the council? Okay, fantastic. And then the last thing, I will try to keep this brief, but our local Walmart store is in the process of renovating the store, which I certainly appreciate because we've seen some stores who don't take pride in how their facilities look and they're more focused on revenue. Walmart is sparing no expense in this renovation and asking the town to be a part of their grand reopening. That initial date was going to be July 22nd, but it is being postponed until September. So I wanted the council to just be aware. As soon as I get that new date, I'll circle back to make sure that everyone has that information and can hopefully participate. But they really want to celebrate the work and partnership in the community and the relationship with Bladensburg. And so they'll also be awarding grants during that ribbon cutting ceremony to organizations who are doing good work in our very own community. So just wanted to give a heads up on that. That is the completion. I can't believe we, we did it. Thank you all for being so patient with me, trying to move us along, but want to give you a break in between the meetings. And again, if you have a moment to just review the ordinance before we come back at seven. But with that, that completes our agenda. It's their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
A second.
Backended by Councilmember Blunt. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye. Any nays? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. See you back at seven.